Thank you. So as I mentioned, we're back halfway through. We'll keep going, but I think that will be our last break and we'll power through to the end. So I just want to say that I appreciate everyone's spoken thus far. You all look up to my cricket club a lot. I really appreciate the effort, the energy and preparation that was put into the remarks. It's been incredibly educational experience for myself and I'm sure for the health commissioners. So thank you all. Next speaker is Dan Smith. Good, let's see. Still good morning.
Still good morning. And thank you for the opportunity to comment on the draft regulations. My name's Dan Smith. I'm here on behalf of the Centec Suderverg, which is a national law firm with an office in Boston and specializes in cannabis. A couple of my colleagues spoke yesterday and were preparing brief comments that will definitely
Be brief.
So I'm just going to kind of briefly go over a few points I'm here just to talk about delivery. Many of my, any of the points that I want to make have already been made probably more eloquent by people before, so I would just try to be brief. I think the delivery program could be a real boon to Massachusetts. I think the, one of the issues we have right now is a lack of access or a lack of convenient access and delivery can solve a lot of that problem by allowing people to get the legal product at their home conveniently, because as somebody mentioned before, they already can get it delivered to their home through the illicit market. And also, I want to commend the commission for making this an opportunity for social equity applicants and small businesses to get a foot in the industry and have a license that they can, they can try to turn into something pretty valuable. But as we're going through these regulations, we found a few provisions that might kind of hamper the benefits that could flow from the program, because they either will reduce access or raise the cost to a point that might make the license less valuable. The first one, and as I mentioned before, is the prohibition on delivering to communities that have inactive retail bans. That's one way. It just limits the amount of potential customers from these businesses and also just creates a monopoly for the illicit market to be able to deliver to those communities. Further, the reasons that a community might ban a retail location aren't necessarily the exact same that would be affected by delivery. There could be traffic issues or concerns about the community's character that may be affected by a retail location that actually aren't going to be affected by a discreet compliant delivery service. The second one, and I want to leave with a point, but is body cameras. It also will favor locations that are in heavily populated areas or that have the ability to verification. We request that it be expanded to allow verification to happen at other sites or also hopefully through an online portal. This is, this seems to be one of those provisions that aren't present in alcohol delivery or in other forms of delivery. And with the delivery drivers also being trained to properly verify identification, the security concern should be minimized there. Two more quick ones. The big one is just, there's a lot of security requirements here that are going to drive up the cost. If these are supposed to be licenses that allow smaller businesses and businesses that don't have access to capital, all of these security provisions that increase the amount of money that it costs to enter this industry are going to make that license less valuable. And some of the margins on delivery are going to be pretty small, so there's not a lot of wiggle in there. So just as you're reviewing your security, your security requirements, try to take into effect kind of cost on starting up new businesses. And the last one, well, the rest will be in my comments. The last one is just to allow all products sold by a marijuana establishment to deliver it rather than just marijuana and heroin products. So thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Next speaker is Blake Mensing. Good morning, Blake.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here, commissioners. I appreciate all the work you do. I don't envy your job and having to listen to yahoos like me. Here it goes. I'm not going to tell you I told you so or anything that you're doing is insane. I spent last night reviewing the entire video because I'm a glutton for punishment and want to be well informed. So I'm going to run through what I have, and I guess I'll mention my affiliations first. So I'm Blake Mensing, chief counsel and founder of the Mensing Group. I'm co-owner of Polioq 420 and aspiring retail applicant in Polioq, obviously, as well as a small-scale cultivator and craft rosin operator applying in the future under a company called Coyote Cannabis Corporation. With that said, I want to touch on a few things in the draft regulations and also just sort of frame this. So a lot of what I heard yesterday from some of the people with the public safety and public health concerns are based on fears that are, fears of the plant that are so grossly disproportionate to the actual potential individual harm and societal harm that I just think it's unwise to say, to predict the sky falling in ways that aren't based in reality. So the lethal dose of THC in an adult human would be the equivalent of smoking 1,500 pounds of flour in 15 minutes, which is impossible. So there's been no recorded deaths in all of human history, and we're talking about this like it's uranium. Just want to frame that. It can't kill you. It hasn't killed anyone in all of human history directly. To the understand, if the issue is relating to lighting, just list what supplemental lighting may be used. As some of the farmers who have skills in cultivation that I do not have mentioned, it doesn't work for outdoor or greenhouse if you have to use the sun if you can't have your mother plants feeding a stream of cones into that for propagation. In addition, the regulatory definition, which is in guidance about what a mature plant is, which obviously canopy measurement is based on, is not based in botanical science at all or the dictionary definition of the word mature. Who have their 5,000 square foot canopy under micro business thought they had that much canopy and they don't anymore. So I would advise you and urge you to just listen to the people who grow the plants as opposed to drawing an arbitrary line in the sand that hurts small businesses. Onto the fees. I'm just curious what increase in service by the commission justifies a tripling of a manufacturing license fee? I think also the increase, obviously it's a new category, but the delivery-only license fee is more than a transportation fee. If this license type is intended to let people access this industry with less capital, I don't understand why it's so much more expensive. Also, I think the delivery-only retailer is a misnomer. It's a courier license. You can't purchase it and warehouse it. And retail has a specific dictionary definition as well. It's selling to the public and not for general wholesale. That said, I think delivery-only retailers quote-unquote should be able to purchase from small businesses, co-ops, craft, co-ops. My drastically reduces their ability to make a profit, again, which is counter to the intent of opening up this license type. Social consumption, I have a question as to why there's no bring your own cannabis. I certainly understand it from a proprietor's perspective, but I don't understand why you couldn't have something akin to a corkage fee. The concern is that there's no place for certain people to consume legally in this state. Along those lines, there's a prohibition about delivery going to state subsidized housing. I understand the federal subsidized housing. Why would you punish someone who needs assistance from getting a product that's legal? There's a monetary test about who can get cannabis now? That offends me greatly. Let's see. There's also some ambiguity about whether deliveries under these delivery-only retail licenses may deliver medical products. It says, it references MJ Retailer, but then says delivery to patients or qualified caregivers. So that's ambiguous. The definition of retailer is adult-use, but you've mentioned medical. And finally, 935 CMR 500, 100, sub-paragraph four, sub-paragraph F, it makes an operator account for costs incurred under a host community agreement? That's not the operator's responsibility. And in fact, I've seen clauses in host community agreements that say, this is really hard to calculate this impact, so you operator agree at the outset that 3% is the right number. So how do you prove that? How do you show receipts for costs that weren't actually ever incurred? So I guess that wouldn't be me if I didn't manage host community agreements. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and I appreciate your work.
Next speaker is Adrian Bean.
Good morning. Cannabis businesses. My comments today are pretty specific. They're with regard to farmers and outdoor growers that would like to have more regulatory certainty as they transition from growing during the traditional growing season to grow in the colder months. So with that, I would start with the definition of greenhouse. I wonder if it would make sense to create a list of safe harbor structures that have certain characteristics similar to what you did for qualified lighting products? There's a list that people can reference. I think that would, because the way it's written now, greenhouse is a greenhouse if it's been inspected and been determined to be a greenhouse. That doesn't provide a lot of regulatory certainty for a farmer that's trying to determine how they can grow inside. And on that point, to my knowledge, there have not been greenhouses approved, recreational, But there have been growing in storage containers. So I just want to briefly address the difference in cost between growing in a greenhouse versus growing in an outfitted storage container. Traditional greenhouse that's 4,000 square feet, hoop structure, heat, lights, that would run you about $27,000. A storage container can be between 12,000 and 25,000. And that's an eight-by-20-foot container, so that gives you a canopy of 160 square feet. In addition to that, you've got to add heat, electricity, and those additional costs can add up to 9,000 to 1,600. So now you're looking at 25,000 to 38,000 for 160 square feet of canopy. Now, I have a client that will likely do that to avoid the regulatory risk of constructing a greenhouse and not have it approved. So moving on from that, I would also like to request that you consider modifying the subsection on structural changes, so that is 500 dot 104 one C and 501 dot 141 C. I think it might be helpful to explicitly carve up in the section on structural changes greenhouses and similar structures that will be utilized by outdoor growers. And then to make in addition, in the section on architectural plan reviews, so that's 500 dot 103 one A and 501 dot 131 A, to state that farmers and outdoor growers that intend to grow during the structures and intend to utilize. And then to have that portion of the project approved at the inspections level rather than needing to go up to the commissioners, because that creates uncertain timeframe. And again, this is, the timeframe is the big problem for people that are trying to put outside. That's the summation of my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Adrian. Next speaker is Fatima Fia.
Good afternoon, Chair Hoffman and members of the commission. My name is Fatima Fia and I'm an associate at Hiller PC. We represent the high-end holding company LLC, a woman and person of color-owned controlled cannabis company that is to be based out of Polioq, Massachusetts. Today, our comments concern proposed eligibility criteria for participation in the social equity program under draft regulation 500 point 105 17B. We'd like to begin by thanking the commission for taking an important step towards creating a more diverse and inclusive cannabis adult-use program. But while we applaud the commission for its incredible work, we do believe that it doesn't go far enough in terms of achieving meaningful participation for the cannabis industry by women and persons of color as state law requires. In particular, we believe that the criteria for Massachusetts' social equity program must be broadened to account for applicants' race and gender as well as their ability and commitment to employ, train, and support those who would already qualify for the social equity program under the currently proposed criteria. The currently proposed criteria are primarily aimed at those who have been directly impacted by the war on drugs. And we appreciate the commission's approach to this complicated issue, because we believe it's important that individuals whose lives have been torn upside down as a direct result of the weaponization of cannabis are given an opportunity to reap the benefits therefrom. Where we disagree, however, is with the commission's apparent abandonment of those women and persons of color who, although not directly harmed by the war on drugs, are nevertheless at a disadvantage in a budding new industry, which, like most other industries before it, is being dominated by whites and men. An applicant's race or gender alone may and often does pull us significant barriers to entry in the workforce and entrepreneurship generally and in the legal cannabis industry in particular. It is well-known, of course, that women and minority-owned businesses frequently face obstacles in discrimination in securing capital and financing and in their networking efforts. And this is true even when controlling for factors such as personal wealth, education, and place of residence. In the cannabis space specifically, women who once saw significant business opportunities during the infancy of the legal cannabis industry are now finding themselves being slowly pushed out or unable to secure funding as more traditional capital enters the space. Capital, which is largely dominated by men who often invest in other men. And in the context of cannabis applications, women founders are more likely to lose their women-owned business status due to barriers to entry which force them to give up equity at the early stages of their company in order to be application-ready and to obtain creative funds. In light of the barriers facing women and racial minorities, it is no surprise that, notwithstanding Massachusetts' implementation of the social equity program and its requirement that every adult-use applicant submit diversity and positive impact plans, that only 1.2% and 4.7% of all businesses participating in the adult youth program are minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses respectively. Such abysmal rates of representation must be rectified and can be rectified by encouraging and supporting the participation of all persons belonging to underrepresented groups. Although lacking in diversity, Massachusetts' adult youth program is still in its infancy and can correct course and lead the country in creating the most diverse and inclusive adult-use cannabis program. We therefore recommend that the currently proposed criteria for the social equity program be modified to include an applicant's race and gender as additional factors for consideration. In addition to discounting race and gender, the currently proposed criteria also fail to consider whether an applicant would commit itself to employing and or training individuals who qualify for the social equity program under the currently proposed criteria. The individuals likely to satisfy the currently proposed criteria will require substantial support in the form of capital, training, and education. And while a social equity program does propose to provide some of these benefits, it is doubtful that the state will be able to adequately fund the program in order to provide all the resources necessary for these applicants to not only enter the industry but to thrive in it. Nor can the state rely upon a handful of volunteers to provide consulting services and other resources. Instead, the commission should modify the currently proposed criteria to also include consideration of applicants who commit to hiring and training those applicants who would already qualify in the social equity program under the currently proposed criteria.
Thank you.
So the benefits provided to applicants making this commitment should include expedited processing of their license applications and eligibility to participate in the social consumption pilot program. Rewarding these applicants who choose to support or supported by the war on drugs is in everyone's best interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Fatima. Next speaker is Jeff Cavitz.
Good afternoon, thank you. Jeff Cavitz, Economic Development Director for the town of Amherst. I submitted comments via email and I started summarizing them in different tactics this afternoon. And first of all, thank you for all the work you do, commissioners, staff as well. Can't imagine it's easy or not a lot of work. What I wanted to try to do today is walk through from a consumer perspective, how you would purchase cannabis at a retail shop, how you would get it delivered to you, and going to a social consumption, because I think, my point is, it's going to be difficult for businesses to be successful in this regulatory environment. So you go to a retail shop, you show your ID outside the door or to get in the door, you see what you want, what they have available, you purchase it, you show your ID again, pay for it, and you leave. For delivery only, you still have to go to the original retail location. And if you're ordering from multiple retail locations, you have to go to each of them for the pre-certification, each verification. And then when it's delivered to you, not only is there a person that walks up to the door with a body camera, there's a video camera in the car also recording it, and you have to sign a manifest. And I could be getting all of this wrong and I apologize if I do, but this is my understanding reading the regulations. You sign a manifest saying that you received delivery, which, quickly jump back to retail, thank you very much for the privacy protections of not tracking when you purchase in retail stores, but that is completely the opposite of delivery. You're exactly, you're having somebody sign saying, yes, I received this product. So a little inequity there. And then wanted to talk about the social consumption. And again, this is how I'm picturing it, reading the regulations, which is you walk through the door, you get your ID checked, you go to a sales area, you purchase the product, you move from the sales area to a consumption area which has no windows and is being observed. So again, I'm picturing sort of an underground bunker with a one-way narrative. Obviously, that's not exactly how people are going to set it up for success, but that's what I'm picturing in my head. You consume the product, no smoking if it's indoors, without a very expensive ventilation system, no vaporization, which means slower activating product. So you sit there while you wait for the psychoactive ingredients to take effect, and then you sit there for another several hours because you don't want to drive impaired. And by the way, you're throwing away the product that you didn't consume there even though you paid fully for it. Or now, which I think is a public safety concern as well. So just looking at the three options, I think it's going to be very difficult for businesses to be successful the way I understand that the regulations would work in practice. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the commission and much more detailed comments in my written comments. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Jeff. Next speaker is Alyssa Brewer. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you and thank you for coming west. Yes, I'm Alyssa Brewer. I am a town councillor in Amherst. However, just as I listed in my affiliations and the emails I sent this morning, I'm not speaking for the town council, I'm not speaking for the town, I'm speaking as an individual, but someone who previously having served on a select board and on the alcohol task force for the treasurer and also recently on the social consumption working group, just speaking as someone who's been working on these things for a while. So running through again, because we sent you a lot of details, both Jeff and Alyssa separately, I wanted to thank you for taking away the $50 fee for patient registration once a year. We've heard from a lot of people that that is meaningful to them. I want to thank you for splitting out the section on notification and approval of charges and for the clear focus on ownership and control changes. And yes, I did put the actual numbers on the page, so you can find them out. I want to follow up on something that was mentioned earlier in terms of RMDs and expectations. That's been a constant frustration in Amherst in that we had a number of RMDs we thought were going to open that never opened. And because we felt like we had to put some sort of limit on how many retailers we would have rather than leaving it wide open, that sucked up four of our spaces right there. And only one of them's open and who knows if the others will ever open. And so the effect of having worked on alcohol before invested some money in a storefront that they now get to skip ahead of other people who also invested a lot of money in a storefront and are making this progress. Speaking of the social consumption working group, I could speak about that for powers. This commissioner title knows, but I wanted to just hop on a couple of things. One is, I do understand the concerns everyone has about driving under the influence. I'm very concerned with the same things everyone else is in terms of the way we measure driving under the influence. And I would not like us to stop moving forward on the social consumption pilot because we're waiting for that. I believe a very small social consumption pilot program is going to allow us more access from groups we've been trying so hard to include in the industry. I, of course, previously in the social consumption work was very supportive of individual event licensing. I know that that is not currently on the table, but I think it would have made it more accessible, again, to a larger group of people. Following up on what my colleague in Amherst just said, consumers that purchase chocolate bars with multiple five-milligram doses per product are not going to be happy if they have to discard their uneaten product. We talked about that a lot. And so it's clear to me that manufacturers are going to come up with new products. If this ever gets off the ground, they're going to come up with smaller items, which of course is going to have a whole other labeling, et cetera, et cetera. But they're going to have to do that because we can't be selling 25 million American people and having to shut them down on the way out the door if that's how we're going to do things. Skipping to a completely different section, 500 point 101, I want to thank you for increasing the newspaper notice from seven days to 14 days on community outreach meetings. Many people are not aware of those meetings. I have some other suggestions for those meetings in my notes, including attestation that at least one of the meetings was held in the municipality where the establishment's proposed to be located, because we had a company that said, yeah, I'm just going to do it in the neighboring community. It's like, what? How are people even going to get there? And so it was a very strange thing to do, but because the regulations don't say you can't do that, I'm waiting for the next one to say, you can drive two hours to come to the community outreach meeting, right? So that seems like an oversight that none of us would have predicted, but is one of the things that has come up. In renewal of licenses, 500 point 103, I'm really concerned about the change in wording from accounting of the financial benefits according to the municipality as the result of host community agreement. And I'm talking so fast, I know I'm down to 30 seconds. Is, I don't believe the draft language actually accomplishes what you think it accomplishes from a layperson's reading. I think because you're seeing it perhaps from your view, when I look at it from my end, I'm seeing no connection between the host community agreement and costs in the current language, and I'm seeing that that needs to be clarified a lot. I have previously submitted testimony to the Joint Committee on Cannabis Policy associated with your request of the legislature that you be allowed to review host community agreements, and I'm part of the be careful what you wish for aspect associated with that, because I'm not sure how you can tell that police detail in Northampton, Amherst, or Worcester are fair and reasonable costs. So lots more in the email. Thank you so much for coming west.
Thank you, Alyssa.
I just wanted very quickly, if you're following social consumption, thank Alyssa for the hours, the work that she put into our working group.
Yeah, thank you, Alyssa. Next speaker is Peter McAvoy.
Good afternoon. I'm Peter McAvoy. I'm an attorney in Massachusetts. And I want to
Can anybody hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, would you would you assist please? Yeah. So I want to thank the commission, really, for taking on what is a, as far as I know, first in Massachusetts opportunity of taking an illegal matter and trying to regulate it for the benefit of social and economic opportunities. And let's face it, it was made illegal at one time to put dark-skinned people, in large part, put dark-skinned people in jail. Again, you're quoting us. And the economic and the social equity aspect of it. I like the economic aspect of it, and I want to recognize that it's sort of a new way that we're doing law, taking something illegal and making it legal. And these regulations are pretty stiff. I hope that going forward, we can address some of the things that I'm hearing this morning. What I'm hearing this morning is what we have is in large part, or perhaps too much city decision-making to address what is a country solution in farmers. Specifically, I am interested in marijuana craft cultivation. If I'm not using the words right, it's because I just started reading the regulations. I am at least in early representation of one co-op that is not yet applied for a license. But what I noticed is some discrepancies with, for instance, other things. And specifically what I'm speaking about is the international cooperative principles. How an employee of a marijuana establishment, how, actually, how a family farmer from a marijuana establishment is going to be able to take the time to fulfill all these regulations is beyond me. And I know that because I'm dissolving a company where I displaced 4 million gallons of used fossil fuel with used cooking oil. I had to ultimately do that on my own. That is a great enterprise, and I am dissolving it because I could not meet all the state regulations that are involved. You know why? Because the state regulations involved are designed by city decision-makers. So there are some excellent So there are some excellent points in here. The solution to allowing economic empowerment in western Massachusetts, where we have had farmers for hundreds of years supplying the needs of cities and other parts of the state, is the system administrators within the craft cooperative that you're addressing, marijuana cultivators. And I would like you to focus on the entire body of legislation and perfecting it so that it meets what we need going forward in terms of a lot of things. And I think it's a wonderful opportunity, and I thank the commission for fighting through and making this happen, but we all have to understand that it's new and that we need to be aware of what's going on. From an attorney's perspective, I look at these regulations, and as I'm drafting a lease, I think to myself, oh, this is going to litigation? Well, how not? How can it not go to litigation? Is there security, is there definition about the security needed for this outdoor grow? And time is short, I wish I got more involved in the legislative aspects of this earlier. Sorry to hear that five o'clock tonight is, and I'd love to address more matters with the commission and anyone else as time goes on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter. Next speaker is Marie Robinson.
My name is Marie Robinson. I'm a lifelong resident of western Massachusetts. I came to address a couple of issues today. And I think the first, and I want to echo what Blake was saying earlier, is that cannabis is responsible for zero deaths. I think 175 fatalities a day are due to drug overdoses. An average of 10,000 people a year are killed because of drunk driving accidents. I'm a victim of a drunk driving accident myself. You've been very transparent sharing data in regards to the industry here in Massachusetts, but I know you're also supposed to collect data in regards to public health and safety and how what you've been doing has impacted public health and safety in the state. So I would be really interested to see how public health and safety here in Massachusetts is being impacted by the cannabis regulations. That, of course, ties right into social consumption, which I am in favor of. I don't think your current social consumption regulations resolve the problem of some people have nowhere to go but to consume illegally. That's still a problem. Another topic I wanted to address is the agent registration process. I was employed by a co-located establishment recently. Unfortunately, the position wasn't very fit for me. But I hope you would consider allowing an active registration card to remain with the individual while it's active, so I can pursue moving on to my next employment opportunity. I think that a family's wallet and livelihood are impacted if they have to wait that amount of time to get clearance that they already got. The last thing I want to mention is the numbers that are posted on your data platform in regards to how many women are in the industry. 30 something percent, even though we represent 52% of the population of the state. I don't really like those numbers. I think that you should also take into consideration which positions females are holding in the industry and under which license types. I find it disheartening to offer a position at a company whose upper management is comprised solely of men. I think that's a good tip.
Thank you very much, Marie. Next speaker is Gabriel Salazar.
Hello.
How are you?
Great, fantastic. Appreciate you guys' energy and time that you put into this. My name is Gabe Salazar. I'm the founder of We Can Deliver. Right now, my application is pending for social equity. My pending application doesn't only put a limit on myself, however, also my community of where I grew up. There's been two murders, two big busts of fentanyl, a handful of shootings and stabbings in the last year. Yet my community isn't considered one of those places of disproportionate impact or a place affected by the war on drugs. But someone in Abington is eligible, where you have a 1 in 85 chance of becoming a victim. Average income is $98,000, and the crime rate is 41% lower than Boston. I've also been arrested but never convicted, so I'm kind of scaling this weird line with my application. So I came here because I want to do delivery, and I want to be able to help change the environment of my community to help promote growth, and that's why I decided to do this delivery company. Currently, I'm doing alcohol delivery, so I'm delivering a regulated product, and you know, I want to get an opportunity to bring in a team that, you know, we had years of selling weed, like, we have the experience, we have the knowledge, we have the know-how. And now we've gained the knowledge of delivering a regulated product. So one of the things I want to mention is body cams. So I don't think there should be body cams because of privacy. However, if there is, I think the state should flip the bill of holding onto this data. And if public safety's a concern, maybe delivery drivers should be on, if that's a big concern. Verification, right now, currently with the alcohol deliveries that I do, I can verify all 50 states' IDs with my phone. I don't think there's a need for someone who should go to a brick-and-mortar store. That just stops people from being able to get this product that they need. There should be an increased limit from the slice or three and a half grams. If there's a $10,000 limit on how much product you can have in your vehicle, that's 200 slices or 200 three-and-a-half packages. That's a, that's a lot. You know, there should be, there should be an increase on that. I also think that not only dispensaries should be able to get this delivery service, but micro-businesses, co-ops, farms and grow facilities, just to help lower the cost of the product. $50 per slice, you know, this is why the illegal market is so booming. You won't pay $50 for that same kind of product. And there shouldn't be any need for cash with the delivery. You should be able to pay online or, you know, lower the cash. There shouldn't be, there's no need for cash. And with social use, social use, you should be able to smoke or whatever in public on the street, because right now, like, my melanated brothers and myself, we still get harassed for smoking outside. But when I'm with my non-melanated friends, it's not a problem. It's just like, whatever, you know? So it's almost like we're still living in separate worlds even though this is legal. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. Next speaker is Justin Robinson.
Hello. Thanks for having us here today. Dear members of the commission, my name is Justin Robinson, co-founder of a company called Drizly based in Boston. We appreciate you having us out here today. Couldn't make it yesterday, so thank you for that. I'm also an RMD agent making medical deliveries on behalf of dispensary based, so I have some experience in that space as well. Drizly is a technology company that operates an e-commerce platform connecting licensed alcohol retailers with consumers of legal drinking age seeking same-day delivery of alcoholic beverages. Having seven years of experience enabling highly regulated businesses to deliver controlled products to consumers, we respectfully offer our comments on the draft regulations focused on the delivery of marijuana and marijuana products for delivery. First, let us support the following important draft regulations with regards to delivery. We support the exclusionary period for social equity and economic empowerment applicants in delivery. Based on our experience, not only do we think this is a viable, low-barred entry, profitable business that social equity applicants will be able to launch and scale, but it could be an important example for other states around the country to follow. Secondly, we support that delivery agents are required to be employees, not independent contractors of delivery only retailers. Thirdly, we support that businesses make their best efforts to facilitate electronic payments instead of cash. Next, we kindly offer the commission, consider the following amendments to draft regulations. Firstly, we recommend that the commission establish rules for consumer payments for delivery. The draft regulations do not address issues concerning consumer payments for delivery orders. In the alcohol industry, regulations mandate that the brick-and-mortar licensee captures the payment in full from the customer. In adult-use marijuana, we caution against any form of reselling activity where the delivery-only retailer is expected to pay in full for the product, then deliver it to the consumer, therefore having some quote that they have to worry about. If a consumer is paying in cash at the door, we submit that the delivery-only retailer then transfers the cash back to the marijuana retailer. If a consumer is paying via cashless ATM or debit machine, we submit that the marijuana retailer is the direct recipient of the payment. The delivery-only retailer then invoices the marijuana retailer separately for their delivery services. Secondly, we request the commission to remove the requirement of body cameras. Won't go into any more there. Thirdly, we recommend that the commission extend the exclusionary period for social equity and economic empowerment applicants out of the gate. Simply put, we know that two years is not enough time. We're aware that the commission has the right to extend this period, but we know firsthand that two years is not enough to get a business off the ground and fine scale. We offer that four years may be more appropriate, and additionally, we would suggest that that's done at the commence operations stage of the first licensee, not when the regulations are issued. Fourthly, we request that the... Too impractical, as the demand for deliveries will fluctuate dramatically based on time of day and the day itself. Our experience in the alcohol industry would suggest that a delivery-only retailer may need 15 to 20 to 30 vehicles on a Friday or Saturday night, but only two to three to four on Sunday through Thursday. Therefore, they've sort of, it's already an expense to try to staff up for when demand is heavy on weekends. Alternatively, just as in the liquor business, we'd suggest that each vehicle used for marijuana home delivery needs a permit issued by the commission, but may be owned or leased by the employees of the delivery-only retailer. Fifthly, we request that the commission remove the pre-verification requirement. The in-person pre-verification process, as currently drafted, may not protect public health and safety. We know, based on years of experience, that a consumer's identification may be quickly yet thoroughly reviewed and verified by a delivery-only retailer at the consumer's residence, just as well as a candidate. This indulgence hasn't gotten noticed. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Next speaker is Jessica Allen. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Members of the Mass CCC, thank you all for hearing us. My name is Jessica Allen. I'm a member of Farmbook Co-op. My family owns a beautiful 56-acre farm in nearby Munson. I speak to you today about farmers and local zoning. The cannabis co-op license is such a beautiful thing because it allows small farms to continue to harvest crops for our local community while also harvesting cannabis on a small scale. Cannabis is a great bumper crop, and it can help keep Massachusetts' small farms alive and thriving. We need this more than ever. Farms all around us are selling out to big solar. As I shared with you six months ago, town Munson initially created an adult-use marijuana bylaw that zoned out co-op farming. I advocated for the committee of townspeople to be formed instead, so we could craft a bylaw that would give small local farms access to their local market opportunity. As this committee was formed, it was comprised of two planning board members, a prohibitionist, and myself. As meetings progressed, it was clear this group was not going to create a pathway for Munson farmers to get a license. It was extremely frustrating, and social media was a powerful tool for me to educate my townspeople about what was going on. And in retaliation, one of those planning board members sent out a two-page email to his committee members concluding that perhaps a co-op cultivation license was not a good idea for our town. He was conducting business outside of a public meeting with quorum, and so I filed an open meeting violation against him. It took a lot of courage. My complaint went to the Attorney General, who agreed. I resigned from that committee. And with the partnership of Farmbook Co-op and the Massachusetts Recreational Consumer Council, I collected over 200 residents' signatures by petition. I created my own special town meeting and attempted to zone in the co-op license for Munson farmers. And last month in July, I presented accomplishments of zoning bylaw that contained multiple license types in multiple zones. And I was forced to present within a 10-minute timeframe by the town moderator, which was not easy. I received the majority of votes that night, but fell just 18 votes short to meet the two-thirds majority that was needed. I am finding that most of my voting population does not understand the various license, what the various license types mean. And because I was trying to roll a number of them out with only 10 minutes to explain, it was an impossible feat. Today, Munson's marijuana committee is dissolved, and certain folks in the town offices are planning to move forward with a bylaw that they're creating in-house themselves. I am going to simultaneously tailor my bylaw draft to solely focus on the co-op farming license. And if the town will not bake my co-op language into their draft, then we shall run our two bylaws against each other as we approach November town meeting. And I share all this information with you so that you are aware of the municipal level warfare that unfortunately exists in certain towns like Munson. Zoning in co-ops for us has not been an easy feat. I said it six months ago, and I say it again tonight, today. Good morning, good afternoon. I've been here a while.
You start, you start it out.
Anyways, you know, what's confusing to me is that meanwhile, as I have this feat that I'm fighting, okay, my town has a corporate indoor grow facility that already has hosted a community outreach meeting last October regarding their intention to do adult-use cultivation, and they're not even zoned in to do adult-use cultivation, but certainly they would be first in line to obtain a license through the CCC, which certainly intrigues me, because the bylaw that I was going to pass last month would have zoned them in. Already, somehow, they seem to be so many steps ahead of us. So I just want to draw the attention to Munson. And to let you know, of course, corporate indoor grows don't have the ability to offer the people of the Commonwealth a sustainable, clean, organic, sun-grown, craft cannabis via greenhouse grow. Co-ops can only do that. It's what the people want, and in Munson and through Farmbook Co-op, we will. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jessica. Next speaker is Morris Parte. Did I get that right?
Very close, Morris Parte.
Let's try Parte now.
Thank you, commissioners, for all your excellent work that you've done so far, as well as for making the two-hour drive down the Pike this morning. I just... Well, that's right, you're coming in the correct direction. Wanted to quickly point out, it seems like there's a little bit of a conflict in the proposed new retail rules. I understand the no checking or holding of ID information, but simultaneously adopting a limit on transactions per day. So it seems to me those two things are in conflict with each other, and so if you're gonna, especially considering that there's some stores that have 12 teller stations, checkout stations, that it seems like there's no way that a store would just get caught up in a potential liability. That's all I wanted to point out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Charles Lusford. Next speaker is Reginald Stanfield. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Reginald Stanfield, and I represent Justin Company of Cultivation out of Compton, Mass. I wanted to address things that are, I think, influencing small businesses and minority businesses coming to the state to do business as a company that doesn't originate from residents. In Massachusetts, we have moved here in order to enter the industry and have been faced by a lot of different difficulties. So one thing, the licensing process. There's been a couple of times our applications were open without even an email to tell us it was open. So we were waiting two, three weeks to hear back from the commission, and we didn't receive anything. So that happened to us twice. Second thing is them addressing RFIs and things in the RFIs that were not addressed in previous RFIs that we received. So for instance, on, we got a RFI six that stated about our diversity plan, but RFI three had nothing to state about our diversity plan, about the problems within it. I think those two things can be cleared up. That can also help us, you know, process through this faster instead of it taking almost a year when we submitted back in August 2008. The second thing is updates. I think giving out updates for changes and emails for those who can subscribe and letters and people that also are in the process is something that can help us catch them all faster. As a small business owner, I am the CEO, so I am also the CFO. I am the general contractor at times. I'm the person running around doing advertisement and going to these kneecaps and introducing myself to various hearings. So to keep track of every single thing that's being done for a small business, it puts us in a bubble where, of course, a corporation... Hey, this is happening, you know, I bumped into this hearing, and I actually didn't know that there were multiple of these going on, or for a certain language, like it's a vendor training. That, something like that doesn't explain to small businesses who do not have the knowledge to see through all this paperwork. As a cannabis business, all I need to know as a grower is how to grow and how to operate a business. I do not need to know how to drive a entire program for diversity. I do not need to know how to drive an entire program for diversity. The last thing I want to speak on is having an input for minority businesses by themselves and maybe a process that handles just minority businesses. My company is a minority woman and veteran-owned business, so for us to go through the same type of things as a huge corporation just doesn't make sense. By just allowing our company into the industry, you're already affecting change across the United States, whereas people as myself, we are only representative at less than 5% of the cannabis industry in the United States. And also, as a man, African-American man, I am targeted 10 times more to be incarcerated statewide by marijuana. So people like us just getting into the industry, being able to be representatives of our race and our culture can help change the tide of a lot of ignorance to some things that have been taken other, you know, states and other areas. So somebody like myself being an advocate of legal marijuana, not illicit, it changes, you know, statewide for people who are looking up to me as an example and a role model. So I think the great things that can be held in Massachusetts, you know, with you guys having the wattage cap, having the certain things that keep huge businesses out should also, you know, go a little bit further, help minorities, small businesses, tier-one level. You know, we're not tier-three, tier-four, we're tier-one. And a lot of things that tier-one businesses should not be stacked against a tier-six or a tier, you know, 11 business going to the same community. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reginald. The next speaker is Michael Kreisak. Did I get them right? You're fast. Okay, I'm having our time by James Jarvis. I got the first three letters, J-A-R, and the S to the last three letters in the last name. Next speaker is Mary Hall.
Good afternoon. Mary Hall, I have a pending Mass Responsible Vendor Training curriculum. That is a program that everyone who touches cannabis in Massachusetts should have been compliant with by July 1st of this year, as it's stated in the bylaws. It is still pending, but I'm trying to use that to my benefit and for the benefit of the people in the community because as it is now with the economic programs, Massachusetts' regulator signed off on the preliminary plans for the marijuana home delivery, the program that limits participation the first two years to applicants that fit under the state's social equity and economic empowerment provisions. I am from Monson. I am in that program, I'm in the social equity program. And the economic empowerment provisions are designed to help small entrepreneurs from areas of the state that were disproportionately affected by past enforcement of cannabis laws. The social consumption program also falls under this program as along with the drivers' program to level the playing field. I don't know if I'm being clear on this, sorry. Just so that the big companies aren't taking over and it's giving something, a chance for the small operators to have that couple of years to get ourselves established. So it took me several years to create the Responsible Vendor Training program. There's a lot to it, and there wasn't a lot of guidance. It's basically just this is what we want in the program. And I've been working, I've been, because the state's not compliant, I've been running around with anybody who wants me there because they want to hear what the program is and what everything that's in it because they should have it. And I've been doing it just free of charge. I don't charge. I go in because I want people to be compliant. It's so dangerous, the product, and I get that. And if people understand the value, especially as it's made by local farmers, of the product and they're not afraid of it, they're not, they understand it, they're not going to get fines at these places, and everybody's getting fines. But I guess that's here and there, not here nor there. It's a good program. It didn't cost me any money to put the program together. I just had to work really hard. And I'm working with several people from Mass, even though they're going to be my competition, they are also trying to get into this industry. And I'm saving them that time about four years, and I'm trying to help them put their own programs together. But I would like to see this program fall under the same canopy as the drivers and the two smoke shops that, smokable, whatever they call them, sorry. I think that should fit in there with that. And I'm really sad that we don't have more and that there's only the two. And I would like to see that program be included because as it is now, Colorado's been doing this program for years. So they can walk right in the door. They know their curriculum's going to be approved. I'm driving everybody I can crazy to CCC because I haven't known what's been going on. I'm in a panic when it came near July 1st. That's something I had worked on for four years. Somebody else was going to come in, theirs was going to get approved right away. I have no guidance. I'm on this, I'm in this program, and I haven't talked to anyone. The social equity program has done nothing for me. You know, so if I can help these other people in Mass, I love the competition because I love the fact that there are other people out there who are trying to do something also. And I think it would be wonderful if it was included under the same canopy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Our next speaker is Thomas Perle. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Again, high school French.
My mother would be proud. So good afternoon.
Good afternoon. First, my name is Thomas Perle. In October, I'll be a 40-year resident of Massachusetts. I'm also a medical patient, so I'm very happy and want to thank you for coming out to Western Massachusetts and the GSF meetings, although I'm not in Boston. There's a lot of people who can't always get out there and would like to voice their opinions and get some things out, so thank you very much for coming here. I also first want to just mention, I know Arizona is already doing an ally for us to do it as well, which is taking the $250 fee to get your certification for the medical patient card and doing it not every one year, but every two years. It'll save a lot of patients $250 a year, which does not seem like a lot, but to a lot of people, that's a month of medical supplies, of medical products that they can enjoy. To say that you're not going to make money off of the industry as it is right now and to put all these regulations in place to protect the consumer and to the medical patients and then charge them this every year, it's a little bit absurd. To make it every two years would be a lot more convenient and save them money. The regulations have been great. Sorry if this is a little unprofessional, but I'm reading it. The regulations have been great and everything, but they are in place to protect the consumer. And when we do that, I would also like to see the other end come in on the educational purpose. We can put all the regulations on it that we want, but people still don't understand the product. There's still a disconnect between, you know, people understand what a shot is and what a beer is, they don't understand what five milligrams is, they don't understand the difference between tinctures or flower compared to vaping compared to doing more of a traditional form of edibles. And if we educate, if we educate people more, not just in pamphlets, but also in person, we could also maybe relax some regulations and not say all of them, but we don't need to go so hard with regulations on the alcohol industry because people just automatically know what a shot is, how it will affect them, how affecting it will, how drinking will affect them, driving and doing other everyday tasks. I'm not, and I'm also not saying that CCT should be putting out educational classes, but just direct people to those classes and to support those people who are putting it out to interval. So stop people from looking at themselves on the internet, which if anybody's had a cold or any ailments and have tried to look up the symptoms on the internet, you will find that you have, you know, cancer and Doism is false sometimes depending on strains and products and congestion. And also not only education within product, but education for regulation and how we move forward on everything we're doing in Massachusetts. Massachusetts right now is on track to making more money on its recreational sales than Washington State did in their first year. And within doing that, and also Colorado is a billion-dollar industry and ended up itself. We in Massachusetts are leading the East Coast, and we should be very, very proud of that, as am I, and I thank you for that. But we can also lead the country on where we're going and what the future holds. The last point I want to make is that I think it should be that shops and recreational places and cultivators should be able to have T-shirts or stickers. There is a demand for it. I would love it too. I don't see how it's promoting the use of the product. I think it's promoting the local businesses, small businesses. You know, the demand's already there, and there's already people asking for it, and it would be a great help. And I would also like to be the second person to point out that you have a cannabis-controlled commission water bottle on the end of your table. I don't see that of me wearing a T-shirt with a dispensary item as any, as to make people do cannabis more.
Thank you very much. No problem. Our next speaker is Dr. Mary McManus. Next speaker is Lauren Fortier. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, commissioners. First of all, I just wanted to say thanks again for coming out to Springfield and really appreciate it. My name's Lauren Fortier. I've been a cultivator, a legal cultivator since 2016. And I just wanted to come up and reiterate this sentiment that has been brought to you all multiple times already this morning on the topic of supplemental lighting in greenhouses. The draft regulations read that standard operating procedures should include policies and procedures for energy efficiency and conservation, including identification of energy use reduction opportunities, including natural light and strategies to reduce electric demand. But define outdoor cultivation as the cultivation of mature cannabis without the use of artificial lighting in the cannabis area at any point in time, except for immature plants. As an advocate for environmental responsibility, I must urge the commission to allow supplemental light on greenhouse cannabis space, vegetative or flowering, as any grower or business would never use this supplemental light when the sun is available to us. However, restricting the allowance of this limits the ability to, unable to use greenhouses competitively by this cultivation definition. We will continue to be forced indoors under costly artificial light, limiting the ability of small businesses without the availability of enormous capital investments to compete or even exist in a market dominated by these, you know, large multi-state operators. As was brought up by others before me, as prices are driven down over time, greenhouse growing is absolutely the sustainable way forward, but under the current guidance, it will not be feasible in this climate. I urge you again to reread your own very appropriate guidance advocating for the reduction of energy usage in the industry and to please allow greenhouse growers to use supplemental lighting. This will reduce energy usage on the whole, and I think that we have the opportunity to lead the East Coast in the possible cultivation practice. And so I ask you to please allow us to move forward in the most energy-friendly possible.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lucas Dare. Andrew Lucas.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Sorry, I didn't bring you fruit this time. So police officers are still harassing cannabis consumers, producers, even small-batch producers. Please try to get that to stop happening in whatever way you can. We need expungement. We need expungement for people who have been convicted of cannabis crimes, which are no longer considered to be a crime, and allow those people to enter into the market, encourage those people to enter into the market. Have more programs for people that have had convictions or cannabis arrests to encourage and urge them to be legal. Make the program more attractive to the people who have been doing this for decades by reducing the fees, by making it more accessible for them to join in any sort of aspect of the industry. The greenhouse thing is very interesting, and I'll mention that the beginning of the life cycle of the plant, we need vegetative growth even earlier on in spring, but then also towards the end, we have many, many cloudy days in October where the flowers aren't finished out yet. They're still larvae, not very dense, loose and airy. And so they need to dense up and make more trichome production to be marketable. The customer doesn't want a flower that's larvae. So if that outdoor farmer works their entire year to grow flowers, but then they have the greenhouse structure towards the end in October, then they could run the lights on a cloudy day, but then use the sunlight on a sunny day. So certainly don't limit the lighting for outdoor cultivators. Maybe limit the wattage like we do for the indoor so that we're not blowing out the electric bill, but do certainly allow outdoor farmers to use some sort of supplemental lighting. The delivery drivers shouldn't have to wear body cameras. They should be, that should be up to the business that is, that's having them go out. Some people, I mean, if you're in a neighborhood that's likely to have people get robbed, then the business owner might make that decision to send out their workers with body cameras, but that should be in the, in the hands of that business owner. And we need event, we need temporary event licenses, single-day and three-day event licenses for people to come together and consume cannabis and bring your own cannabis because people are growing, we're all allowed to grow our own cannabis. We should be able to bring our own cannabis to a party where we all share it with each other and celebrate the nuances of different strains and share. And also, I feel like people, small farmers should be able to sell small amounts to each other absent any sort of licensing. A small cultivator that's growing the six plants should be able to sell that very small amount that would be more of a legislature issue where you could just, it urged the legislature to decriminalize possession of cannabis with intent to distribute. That's a law that they've got on books, and they just took possession of cannabis with intent to distribute, made it not a crime punishable by jail time, but instead a crime punishable by, let's say, a fine, like jaywalking, like a dollar jaywalking ticket in Boston that no one's ever going to enforce. That would allow small producers to grow a little bit of weed and sell it to their neighbors. They're not huge businesses like these multi-thousand-square-foot cultivation operations, but they should be able to sell an eighth to their neighbor that didn't have a very good crop, and someone who did have a good crop should be rewarded financially for that hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucas. Our next speaker is Ethan Vogt. Captain Vogt. Why don't you call the bench? All right.
Chairman Hoffman, Commissioner Doyle, Commissioner Tidal, Commissioner McBride, and assembled members of the cannabis community, thank you for this opportunity. If I look familiar, it might be because I gave a first version of this testimony yesterday in Boston, but I'm here in Springfield with a revised and nearly final draft.
We've got four hours to go.
And I'm here to formally read it into the public record. My name is Ethan Vogt. I was born in Boston, and I am the founder of Homegrown Boston, an organization that has hosted consumption-friendly events, experiences, and educational workshops since prohibition ended. Homegrown Boston applied and was granted an economic empowerment priority status. And although this could be seen as against my own self-interest, I strongly encourage the commission to reopen this program. Establishing EEP as an ongoing, rolling admission process would create a pipeline for local entrepreneurs who are neither unaware or perhaps even still underage when the program first took place. I applaud the commission for taking the first step towards licensing social consumption along to the pilot program, but have some specific recommendations for you to consider. Please consider revisiting the prohibition against indoor smoking, expanding it to allow non-combustion methods such as vaping flower or dabbing concentrate. I am confident that it can be done in a manner that protects the health of employees and other guests. I also suggest preventing consumption lounges from being co-located with retail dispensaries to ensure that the inequities in that market do not extend to this new space. Instead, add social consumption privileges as part of all micro-business licenses and all craft co-ops at limited scale. I urge you to move forward with one- and three-day event licenses as proposed by the MRCC. I urge you to move forward with one and three-day event licenses as proposed by the MRCC and other activists. These event licenses are of great interest to the leadership of arts and cultural institutions and I'm confident it would help both help end this stigma as well as bring new audiences to support arts programming across the Commonwealth. However, the most important reason I'm here to testify for the second time before the commission is to ask your support for a growing movement. That is, the establishment of private social clubs where consuming cannabis is permitted. From simply a practical point of view, using the existing protections and guidelines set up by the Commonwealth to regulate social clubs might take some of the pressure off of the rollout of public consumption spaces, which in my estimation seems to be several years in the future. These clubs would be self-organized, BYOC, not-for-profit, member-managed, safe and discreet spaces for adult consumption. Akin to other social and fraternal organizations, these clubs might be especially useful in creating connections and perhaps new entrepreneurial collaborations. The clubs could serve as wellness spaces for their members, providing yoga infused yoga classes or maybe coaching folks on how to grow their own cannabis at home. So maybe you're wondering, why am I asking the CCC to get involved? As the most experienced agency in the state on the regulation of cannabis, the CCC's involvement and guidance on this issue would be valuable in helping us design a framework. But perhaps more importantly, it would send an important signal to the cannabis business community that supporting these community-driven efforts would not jeopardize their license nor their good standing with the commission. My hope is that financial contributions from the cannabis industry could allow these clubs to keep their membership fees reasonable to foster a more inclusive community. In terms of next steps, I would ask that the CCC consider convening a working group to study this issue, to provide recommendations for those who are looking to self-organize cannabis social clubs in their community. And as I mentioned, Boston, finally, I strongly recommend that the commission immediately begin organizing and open to all fact-finding delegation to Southern Spain, perhaps departing in one of the colder months of the winter to study how the cannabis club model has been functioning in that country and how we might be a reply lessons to the movement here, Commonwealth. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ethan. Our next speaker is Michael Collins.
Nothing for today.
Okay. Our next speaker is Catherine Birwos.
Hello. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I thank the commission for the opportunity and request that the commission have annual meetings where the, those affected by the regulations can actually have an opportunity to speak as opposed to just when the regulations are being proposed. I'm Catherine Birwos. I'm an attorney licensed in New Jersey and Massachusetts with primary offices in Muster, Mass. I have recently represented applicants in suitability hearings and in other matters before the commission. The overarching theme of my comments call for fairness, clarity and detailed procedures to manage expectations of the applicants, the licensees throughout the entire process. I will submit detailed written comments, but just to touch on a few critical issues. Regulation 500.400, grounds for denial as proposed states if an applicant is denied, that alone can be grounds for future denials of applications. This means that if someone had an application denied and they can be, that they can be inherently denied on a future application simply because they had their first application denied. This regulation used to say that if a renewal was denied, which would make more sense because that person then had been in the process and deny an applicant. For example, an applicant's positive impact plan may have caused them to be denied. When other entities are allowed to rewrite the plan and receive their provisional license, the denied entity may forever be prohibited from obtaining a license that they will previously, because they were previously denied. The process by which one is allowed to rewrite plans and another is not is arbitrary and capricious. There is no point system or criteria on which applications are equally judged. I commend the chairman for tabling a couple of the decisions recently in an effort to, rather than outright deny the applicant, excuse me, or the licensee. That's the fairest way to handle a situation, allow more information to be obtained before a decision is actually rendered. On 500.102, action on applications, again, specific procedures. I believe it was Gerald that said very eloquently how when they get a request for more information, you get one or two and there's nothing about one plan or another and then you get the final one two days before your application is to be heard by the commission and there are new, there's new requests for information, there's new problems with your application that you're only finding out at that time. And that is very difficult for applicants to be able to deal with. Action on completed applications, I think that a better, if an application is denied, that if reconsideration is not given, timetables should be, well, first of all, timetables and decisions on applications so that people have an idea exactly what the protocols are going to be. And if someone is denied, that they possibly, one of the options be that they be able to reapply immediately as a priority applicant. And even if it means paying an additional fee. Season disorders, 500.350, season disorders and summary suspension orders. A violation should come with a hearing date and time in the violation notice. You've just shut down someone's business and a hearing should automatically be scheduled within 15 calendar days at worst that automatically gives them notice of when they will be heard because their business is closed. Again, that clarity and that procedure needs to be detailed so that there's expectations on both sides. And the 500.800, the background stability standards and licensures, it should be included that if you've gone through the process and been approved, that you shouldn't have to go through it at a renewal or at a subsequent hearing if there is a subsequent licensure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not have anybody else signed up, but I will offer the opportunity for anybody that wishes to speak that has not signed up. I'm sorry, I guess I had you.
Okay, yeah, I was not here earlier today.
That's fine.
Hi, Ted Johnson from Equinox Farm. Delighted to be here and delighted to have my outdoor cultivation license in hand. Yeah, I think this horse is still picking, supplemental lighting. I mean, you know, I've been a 35-year organic farmer, microgreens and mesclun have been my specialty. Supplied restaurants throughout the state, including Boston, for decades. And I've certainly used supplemental lighting in the greenhouses during the dark winter months. And it's been hugely advantageous for my economic well-being. So yeah, I'm just going to reiterate what so many have said, that supplemental lighting, which are powered by solar cells, is going to be very important for those of us that want to continue growing in the greenhouse during the winter months. So I beg you to consider that. And as an offhand remark, I bought a CBD chocolate in my gas station next door to my home. And it's, you know, and it's funny because CBD is really not from hemp anymore than marijuana's from hemp. It's really just dumbed down marijuana as THC cannabis is also, has been, the CBD's been dumbed down in it. They used to be in one plant. For instance, the first time I tried CBD, I knew that feeling, we used to call it being stoned. And, you know, marijuana, we all know it's psychoactive, so this is a body active. So I think that the CBD thing has made marijuana a kind of normal thing. So I just, as a philosophical observation, let's start acting like marijuana too's normal. It's a plant, comes from the same cannabis family. By the way, hemp, we've yet to really touch, but I think when we finally recognize hemp for what it is, a fiber, herb and seed crop, perhaps more of our marijuana packaging will go into something truly recyclable. So those are my offhanded comments.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, please. Did you sign up already or?
I spoke.
Oh, you spoke, I'm sorry, yeah.
I was too nervous, I teach a really good class, but I really hate having to stand up in front of people on stage. One observation is, I know the bylaws like my own name. In the bylaws, you use the word marijuana and cannabis all over the place. I think if we could stick to the word cannabis and refer to those cannabis and not mix and match it, and it does make it hard when I'm trying to write things, trying to stick to your bylaws, I have to change the word.
Thank you. Anybody that has not spoken, they would like to speak. 5:00 PM tonight. Just deadline for written comments, I would urge anybody that is so inclined to do so. I don't speak with commissioners very often, they're independent and they can articulate their own thoughts quite well. But in this case, I
Time, I give myself 30 seconds to freak out when the commission shipped in, I was like, I hope everybody likes this, but.